Okay, thanks. Is it recording? Yeah, okay, good. Thank you. Okay, good afternoon and welcome to council, regular meeting of council Monday, sorry Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, as we had a nice long weekend with community lockdown. And so called me into order at 4:00 PM. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Just a report on D-SAB.
Okay, so councillor Lake, under the report to appointed boards members, I'll also add on myself for the Thunder Bay District Municipal League meeting last weekend. Anything else?
Yes, your worship, the treasurer will bring a report on small business subclasses.
Okay, so we're going to bump that into the administration report?
Yeah, we're gonna bump the report on the final tax levies down to D and that will be C.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, I'll give under sixteen announcements. I'll give an update on the golf course with our opening tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that's it. Just remind everybody shut other electronic devices off and the TV and dogs as well in your homes so they don't bark and make noise in the background. Okay. I have a motion here that council hereby approve the amended agenda for today, Tuesday, May 25th, as regular media council is circulated amended. Mover?
Councillor Mounts.
Okay, second?
Councillor Lake.
Thank you. Any other questions to that? Hearing none, call question all in favor?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Any disclosure of interest today? Hearing none. I do have a motion here that council hereby adopts the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Monday, May 10th, 2021, and the closed meeting of council held on Monday, May 10th, 2021, is circulated amended. Move by?
Councillor Jengra.
Thank you.
Councillor Mounts.
Thank you. Any questions, arrows or missions of those minutes? Hearing none, I call a question all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you very much. Okay, today we're very pleased to have with us Carmelo Nordamentella, the manager for the Nwingo Gokima Forest Corporation, as well as Adam Brown, board representative for the corporation, to give us an overview and update on what the corporation has been doing through the last year or so, year, year and a half of updates. So the floor is yours Carmelo and Adam. Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you Mayor Dumas. Louise, am I putting the presentation up or are you?
You can put the presentation up.
Okay.
Just share your screen.
So let me know if you can see this, please.
Yes, we can see it.
Yep, thanks Carmelo.
Okay, so thank you Mayor Dumas and members of council for allowing Adam, or one of the newest members on the Board of NFMC and the newest Marathon representative on the NFMC to attend the council meeting. We typically, as you know, we'd like to do a presentation to mayor and council annually. Due to COVID, unfortunately, I think it's been two years or close to two years since the last time I was in front of mayor and council and presented an update on the NFMC. So I will do my best to kind of bring you up to speed in a very short time period. Having said that, if you have questions or would like to have further discussion offline afterwards, any member of council can approach me at any time or reach out to Adam or I. So just a refresher, the management area of the NFMC includes the Pick Forest and the White River Forest today. The Nagogami Forest, which was always the long-term vision of the corporation to eventually manage as well, is currently not under our management and I honestly do not foresee the Nagogami Forest being part of the NFMC for the foreseeable future. And it's more has to do with just being able to get a good handle on managing the forests that are currently under our responsibilities before we try and taking on additional area, as you can appreciate it's, you know, the corporation has only been in existence for six years really, has been operating fully for six years and slowly taking on these responsibilities and getting a good understanding. And a good handle on our responsibilities takes time. So having said that, our company continues to operate with a vision of a board of directors that encompasses the whole management area. So just a quick overview, our overall direction and vision of the company comes from the NFMC Board of Directors. The Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry has an oversight role on the agency, but does not dictate the vision and direction of the agency. That remains with the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors has members from each of the seven communities that are within the management area, that being the Town of Marathon, Township of Manitowage, Town of White River and the Township of Horn Pain, the three indigenous communities of Bitigon, Pick Mober First Nation and the Aboriginal Community of Horn Pain. And then there are three seats for at-large members and those at-large members can bring an expertise that the board may be lacking. And all of these members are appointed through the Ontario Public Secretariat process, which is ultimately appointed by, every member is appointed by the Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry. And so I know I mentioned this earlier, so Adam Brown is one of our newest members of the board. He's also the vice chair of the board and he's the Marathon rep on the Board of Directors. And as you can see, I report to the board directly and then my staff, through my staff, I make sure that we meet the expectations and vision of the board, that the board has for this corporation. So our NFMC staff includes a total of twelve full-time positions. All twelve of them are filled as of today. We had a vacancy that was recently filled. In addition to the twelve full-time positions, we have one seasonal position and three, it's usually between three and five summer students that we hire every year. So this year it's three. And so that forms the full staffing of the NFMC. And most of us work from the Marathon office. We do have a satellite office out of White River, where we have at least one to two individuals that work from that office as well. So I wanted to give you an update on who our industry stakeholders are, since quite a bit of time has passed, although not much has changed on this aspect. So AV Terrace Bay, Columbia Forest Products, Horn Pain Lumber, Lacour's Lumber, Longlock Lumber and White River Forest Products all rely on wood purchased from the management area. AV Terrace Bay, B&amp;M Hauling, Columbia Forest Products, Horn Pain Lumber, Lacour's Lumber. I make limited partnership, which is a Constance Lake First Nation harvesting company. White River Forest Products, which includes KB Lake, MFS, which is a Pick Mober harvesting company, and OP Win, which is a conglomerate of three First Nation communities in the Megpie-Chaplo area. Those are the harvesters that have been operating on the Pick and White River Forest for the past year to two years. And from a harvest perspective, 1920, we had a total harvested volumes of 614,000 cubic meters. And 2021, our projected harvest is about 818,000 cubic meters. As some of you may or may not know, so the NFMC is a very unique tenure model in the province of Ontario. We are currently the only fully operational local forest management corporation in the province. There is a second one that is in its startup stage and they're currently in the process of forming a board of directors that will be, it's located in the Tamogami Forest area. As an LFMC and a Crown Agency, we have strict rules that we must follow. Having said that, we also have very unique tools that we're able to provide economic development opportunities through. And due to our unique revenue model, there is no other SFL in the province of Ontario that provides programs like NFMC does. So I just want to talk about a couple of those tools that we have. So the first one is the donations and sponsorship program that we have implemented. So this applies to all the local communities and it's intended to assist with local events, promoting youth activities, education, health and wellness, culture and recreation. Locally, actually, in the Town of Marathon, we've supported the hockey tournament that has been running for the past two to three years. NFMC has been a sponsor for that event, as an example, to one of the local events that we supported Marathon. To date, we've supported 22 projects for a total of about $25,000. So as you can tell, these are small-scale projects. And really, the awareness of the program has been increasing and this goes for all the programs that I'm presenting to you today. And so the uptake has been increasing on a regular basis. So we envision that in a year from now and moving forward, you're going to see the number of projects and the dollars being invested in our communities is going to increase drastically than it has over the initial five years to six years of existence. Our scholarship program was launched two years ago and, you know, we would like to provide 12 scholarships annually. We budget for 12. Of the 12 scholarships, eight of them are for students that are graduating from high school, heading into college or university, and four of them are for students who are from the management area that are currently attending college or university and are moving on to year two, three or four of their program. To date, we've issued four scholarships for a total of $12,000. But I'm happy to announce today that the board will be presented in the June meeting with eight scholarships to be awarded for high school students from the local management area. So we've had a significant increase in uptake on the program due to us raising the awareness of the program and working really hard through raising awareness through social media and directly contacting high schools and building relationships with all the local high schools. And so we've maxed out the possibility under the high school program that we have and hoping to do the same for the college and university program, which is later this summer. The applicants for, the deadline for those are for later this summer. Under the strategic initiatives from, so this is really the big economic development driver that NFMC has as a tool. And the program is intended to support, financially support up to a million dollars for programs that would qualify. The projects must be related to forestry initiatives and it's up to 50% of the total eligible costs. So the program, the actual program would have to be more than $2 million in value for NFMC to support the million dollars. The good thing is that decisions are made at the board level. So there's no red tape. There's no ministerial decision here. The money is budgeted through our annual budget and we're able to provide assistance through this program. So when I made this presentation for the board, there was two strategic initiatives that we've issued to date for a total of $438,000. I'm happy to tell you that the board recently approved an additional two initiatives, both of them from Bitigon First Nation. And the total amount of money that was awarded was almost $300,000. So we are well over $700,000 now just on the strategic initiatives program. And once again, you know, us through raising the awareness of the program, we're starting to see more interest in the program and more uptake in it. So this is a direct result of us, you know, working hard at raising awareness. So just some additional contributions that we made to the communities that are a bit outside of these programs. We've invested $94,000 since 2016 in Indigenous youth natural resources programs. We've provided over $100,000 in forestry training within our management area since 2015. So this is training for both Indigenous and non-Indigenous employees working on the management area in harvesting, road building or health and safety. We've assisted our local First Nation communities in over $80,000 in costs associated to traditional territory and protection of values within the management area. And so our total contributions to the communities, when I made this presentation, is over $720,000. I can tell you today that that is over a million dollars now. So, you know, we're pretty happy. It's taken a while for NFMC to get its feet under ourselves and being able to begin to show what this corporation can do for the local communities. And I think this is a good example of what we've been able to do now. And just a quick update on some of the other projects we had. I'll start from the top left. So we've revamped our websites to be very user-friendly. Policies and programs are highlighted on our website. We've also launched our social media. So we are active on Twitter and on Facebook to try and get the attention of, you know, the younger generation and not only provide them with information on our programs, but also to raise the awareness of forestry and the positive benefits that forestry has on our local management area and to our province in general. We've also moved, since we last talked to you, we used to be in our old offices. We've now moved about a year ago now. We are located within the local high school and we are occupying one of the wings in the local high school. And it's been a great transition for us. The space is much bigger and there are a lot of space now for all our staff. Moving on to the right, you may have, I hope all of you have seen some of the billboards that we have. So we have four billboards on the highways that are at the four corners of the entrances to our management area. So near Hurst, near Longlock, near Marathon, Terrace Bay and near White River. And those billboards promote forestry and promote the benefits that forestry provides to our local communities and to our province. Also, we have just started our tree plant program this year and we're planting 5.5 million trees this year on the management area. And 5.5 million is actually at the low end. We typically are around the 6, 6.2 million tree mark. So we continue to take our responsibility seriously and handle our tree pine program on an annual basis. And there was no hiccups even due to COVID. Last year, we were able to plant over 6 million trees. And then the last one I have, it's just a quick update. I'm sure you have heard in the media about our semi-autonomous vehicle project that we're running. You know, the project, I just want to make sure that you're aware, the project isn't intended to remove employment opportunities from the management area. There are some rumors out there. The project is really intended to find a solution to a trucking shortage that we have, not just on our management area, but it's across Ontario. The proposed solution that we are testing, and I want to emphasize the fact we're just testing this, we're nowhere near being able to implement such a solution. No one is in Ontario. It's intended to really find a solution where maybe we can have a platooning of three trucks where the second and third truck are controlled, the speed, the braking, the direction is controlled by the lead truck and therefore having the ability of having the individuals in the second and third truck not have to be fully licensed and require the full insurance requirements, which are very costly for individuals who are trying to get into the trucking business. So that's the whole point behind the project. It was never to replace individuals or to decrease the amount of economic development opportunities that may be available on the management area. And that's all I have. I know I have 10 minutes of time, so I'll take any questions that you may have now and I will stop sharing my screen.
Great, thanks Carmelo. Is my echoing or was that just going off? Okay, so thanks Carmelo for that and I appreciate it. So I'm going to open up for some questions. I see councillor Valance has his hand up right off the bat.
Yeah, thank you Carmelo for the presentation. Not necessarily a question, more so a comment. I have noticed the social media, the marketing and the advertising, and I have mentioned it, I want to say twice now to Neil, how great professional and how sleek it is. So I just wanted to reiterate that today with you that I have noticed the marketing and I think it is incredible what you guys are doing on social media.
Great.
Thanks so much.
Thanks Vic, Councillor. Mrs. Korchinsky?
Great, thanks Carmelo. Obviously, a little bit of history with NFMC. But I see the, it looks like the harvesting in the coming years around 800,000 cubic meters. Just wondering, you know, based on the two forests, what would be the total allowable cut going forward?
So the allowable cut is actually, now I'm talking SPF here, Daryl, because hardwood, we don't have a hardwood user, as you know. So we're looking at over a million cubic meters would be a 100% allowable cut. But that, you know, that is not really realized in the forest industry for various reasons. You know, ground that we can't get to, whether, you know, areas that are on mountains or inaccessible because there would be so much road to have to be built to get into those areas. So the 818,000 cubic meters that we expected to harvest in total as of March 31, 2021 is a very realistic annual volume and we could probably increase that a bit depending on areas and depending on if we end up finding a hardwood user. But the 800,000 is a fairly achievable number expectation for an annual basis.
Thanks.
Okay, councillor Lake?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So Carmelo, I remember when the forest company got managed, it was mostly because of the mill closures, right? And they owned the forest and they really didn't have an investment in the communities in a way that NFC is supposed to. So I love seeing all those community ventures that are happening and connections. But the big one that I see kind of moving forward is it's the hardwood, right? Like you have hardwood that's not being used. We have a port and a facility that has no major industry. It just feels like on some level, there's got to be this marriage of convenience between, you know, a municipality that needs another industry down at that former mill site and a forest company that has, you know, wood that's not being utilized. You know, in terms of, you know, looking out into the future, I know Adam is now on the board and he's a big proponent of economic development Marathon. How do we work together to try to bring some, you know, industry, especially at that old mill site facility back to Marathon? I mean, you're, obviously you're located here, you're involved in the community, it's great, but it just would be, you know, how do we get that next level of an industry and a big employer down there?
So we are currently working with Cryb, which is the Centre of Research and Innovation in Bioeconomy. We're working with them to, for NFMC to have a, ultimately have a tool, have a document that shows to potential investors what is available on the management area and what the cost to get that wood would be. Once we have that completed, which is close, we're close to having that completed, we would be more than happy to partner with the Town of Marathon to try and attract investors. Now, I want to emphasize that NFMC represents a number of communities. So having said that, we don't pick favorites, but if the Town of Marathon tells us, you know, we want to partner with you, we have the support, let's put your document together with an attractive, you know, economic development document that we produced and let's go look for investors. We are more than happy to partner with you to do that. So and our programs that we have, we can financially support a new investment in the Town of Marathon or any of these municipalities or indigenous communities.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have a couple, I don't see any of the hands up. I have a couple Carmelo, if you don't mind. So going back to Daryl's comment about just over 800,000 and up to a million and then there's the hardwood portfolio on the forest. And obviously, the forest is a big area. We know that and there's costs. And I remember going back and pushing when this was initiated back with Minister Gavell at the time and then through the board and having discussions even with yourself, accessing the fiber through quick bridges and all that, rather than building 60 kilometers worth of road to go up one side of the river and back down the other. Have you got progress on a lot of that planning aspect where you can do things a lot more common-sensely in the forest than it was in the past?
You know, I guess the best way to answer that, the best way for me to answer that is that we try and we, as in NFMC and the mills, try to do things as economical as possible because it makes the most sense. Sometimes it's not as easy as the straight line to the harvest areas and there are reasons behind it. And we would have to talk on a case-by-case basis why that may be. But we do try and limit the amount of roads that we build on an annual basis. And now there's also an emphasis on decommissioning roads as well, so that we try and minimize the footprint on the management area as much as possible or the permanent footprint, right? The scars that some people talk about. So we are trying our best and NFMC is always, you know, the forest management plans are our plans and we look out for the industry, but we also look out for the community. So we do hear when the communities have those types of concerns and we try to minimize the construction of roads on the management area as much as possible.
Great. The original concept after 2009 of the creation of the Forest Corporation and then became the Nwingo Gokima as the name was presented to represent the Missipais. So the Missipais were the controllers with their First Nations neighbors of the forest through the Forest Management Corporation. So that's a good tool and that's the benefit of having the forest in our backyard and our control and management, rather than having an individual company proprietor running that. With that being said, we have other projects and opportunities within our communities and throughout the Forest Corporation's landmass, which is fairly huge as your first slide indicated. We know we've had, you know, for example, the group of seven trail systems and we've had other individuals in our community talk about blueberry farming or, you know, bumblebee harvesting farms. Has there been opportunities to really focus on those type of projects within the corporation and the board level so that people can really benefit off of that Carmelo? And you can give some big dollars to go into the forest that's not about logging. It's about utilizing the forest in a recreational means or maybe a small economic opportunity other than logging. And I know you've identified some projects you've helped out, but I mean, if I look at the initiatives, the 438 to date and then the Bitigon of 300,000, were those initiatives other than logging or they're all logging related?
Well, there, so those initiatives include road maintenance and, yeah, road maintenance and road construction assistance. So they are related to forestry, but the forestry roads are maintained for more than just forestry, right? We maintain them for the traveling public, for hunters, for fishermen, for trappers. So that investment has gone into maintaining those roads with the First Nation community. So we're excited about that initiative. Having said that, we have not explored additional opportunities such as what you're suggesting, whether it's a blueberry farm or anything like that. And no one has come forward to NFMC with an idea like that to look at. I'm not saying that we don't want to. It's just our attention has not been focused on that yet.
Right, and that's great. But I guess what I'm asking is if the board's open to ideas other than logging? Because when I sat originally to create this, this concept, working with the government, was to be diversified in our forest look. So now that you're up and running and you have an actual business model, you have a management team, you have harvesters in the forest, you can now focus on other aspects of the forest, is I guess what I'm saying. So for example, if the group of seven trail community came to you and said we needed $100,000 and they're going to put $100,000, which we contribute to annually, to enhance, not only Marathon, but this would enhance the region for tourism other than forestry, those are the kind of projects I like. And I know we had individuals in our community doing bees and those are other opportunities. And you know, Wawa area, for example, was doing blueberries and there are other opportunities. Whether they've come to you, we can promote it through the Nwingo Gokima Forest Corporation, as well as our municipalities to come, knock on your door, ask for some grants, because you do understand there's alternatives in the forests, I guess what I'm asking.
So our strategic plan, which is currently being updated with a significant turnover on the board, currently has the vision of looking at and exploring at other opportunities on the forest outside of just harvesting. So the division and direction is there from the board. Having said that, I don't believe that today's, the tools that we have today allows for a significant investment in something like the trail that you're suggesting. That doesn't really qualify under our programs, except the small donation sponsorship program. But that would be more of a $5,000 at the most type scale, not 100,000. So the board would have to reconsider our strategic initiatives program to maybe look at options that are outside of direct forestry, as I would say that's what it currently is focused on.
Okay, so with that being said, may I ask if maybe if with the newly appointed board member on the actual call? call today in the video conference is to have the board look at alternatives other than road and forestry uh, 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 opportunities, you know, if they if they come and approach and knock on your door. Because I think it's important for all of our communities and all of the residents within our communities to remember the forest is is the economic engine of of our of our area, but at the same time, it's about enjoying the forest in many different ways, right? Okay, so if you, if I can just ask you to consider that with party strategic planning as well as uh, the the newly appointed board member, to at least have discussions around that, and maybe some of you incorporated. Counsel Debushi, add your hand up. Did you still want to ask a question? No? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? So with not not nobody else, I think that it's a great benefit to our community to have the corporation here. And as you know, Marathon has never been a harvesting community, they've always been a uh, producing community with the fiber, but now that we have the office here and the benefit of the uh the jobs that are are provided through the management of the corporation. I appreciate that and I believe that our neighbors are very, very uh, beneficial of the logging aspect and the harvesters of that. And of course, our First Nations neighbors working with you closely as you stated, Carmelo, with all the different harvesting as well as road maintenance programs and the economic opportunities it does create for them. So thank you and I look forward to seeing you next year and uh, having an update in regards to that and uh. Thanks, Adam, for putting your name forward for um, you know, being a municipal participant for our community.
Thank you, Mayor Dimson, members of council.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Good seeing you guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, up next we have a uh uh, report on the municipal animal control in our community due to the closure of the Humane Society. Mr. Skorczynski.
Thank you, your worship. So the municipality has been notified by the Marathon Humane Society that they will cease operations as of June first of this year, which is next week. Animal control within town boundaries is a legislative municipal responsibility that the town has previously contracted the Humane Society to undertake. The town owns and maintains the animal pound building on Penlake Road. Administration has been in contact with the Veterinary Services Unit of the Ontario Ministry of Agricultural Food and Rural Affairs to obtain guidance on our on our municipal responsibilities going forward. On June first, the municipality will assume responsibility for animal control. Uh, this is only dogs. Uh, this does not include cats, which are not included in our municipal bylaws or bears or wolves, which are provincial responsibilities. Municipal requirements will be governed by the Pounds Act and the Animals for Research Act. From an operational perspective, the municipal bylaw enforcement officer will be the lead agent for animal control for the municipality. During weekday hours, eight to four thirty, the town office would be contacted for dog issues. After hours and on weekends, the on-call manager would be responsible. Financially, fees and charges as they relate to animal control are contained within the approved municipal fees and charges schedule approved annually by council. Operational costs to maintain and operate the pound facility are included in the yearly municipal operating budgets. There are no no options with this report and it's presented for council's information and any questions? Thank you.
Great, thanks for that report. Uh, anybody have questions in regards to that? Counsel Lake?
Uh, yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, it it is, uh, you know, that facility's been run by volunteers forever uh, and has has been a really good facility, so it's it's really sad to see it um, kind of not be staffed anymore. So I guess my question is is kind of twofold. One is operational, so uh, if 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 somebody's got a dog, you just you obviously call that number. The the uh, shelter used to take in cats, so now if you find a stray cat, like what's the process for somebody in the public if it's not under our municipal bylaws? Uh, and then I guess, once that question is answered, wondering if you know, if a group of people did want to step forward and I know they've tried, uh, what would be the process to to get that back as a volunteer organization?
So with respect to, you know, the, I'll I'll deal with the the cat question because that's always had a little bit of political motivation tied to it as well as it it's just not something we're equipped to deal with, honestly, um, as a municipality now that we've lost the Humane Society. Um, you know, the one thing that we know has worked extremely well, um, both um, for stray cats and stray dogs, um, is the advent of social media. Uh, generally when people post pictures or, uh, you know, they they find these strays, uh, they're generally picked up quite quickly and and they don't have to be put into the pound. Um, you know, in this case, if we were contacted about a stray cat, you know, it's unfortunate, but we would not be responsible under our bylaws for taking that in nor required to. Um, and we're just not staffed to to do that at this particular time. So you know, re- really what we try and, you know, that's not to say we wouldn't assist with trying to find the the owner of the cat. Um, you know, certainly, you know, our bylaw enforcement officer has a a lot of experience in animal control. Um, and we would try and facilitate that, um, but the expectation administratively wouldn't be that we house those stray cats. It would only be dogs. Um, and with respect to the second question, um, I I guess the challenge from a volunteer perspective would be and and, you know, it al- it always revolves around risk management and liability. So when we contracted the Humane Society, uh, uh, Humane Society, obviously, you know, they they had a charter and and it was recognized as a, you know, that as a not-for-profit in Ontario, so it was very easy to contract with. So, you know, from a a purely volunteer perspective, the simplest solution is just what we're doing right now as we handle this administratively through uh, the Town of Marathon. But I think if there was a, you know, a a local faction that wished to try and re-energize the Humane Society, um, you know, they should contact Mr. Martel and and we would try and, you know, start those discussions to see if that was a possibility going forward.
Great, thanks for that. Counsel Debushi?
Uh, yeah, I can't remember the specific number or the total amount that we uh, had offset for the Humane Society, uh, they were doing the work. But uh, the the work of managing the animals that were in the pound and or servicing them or making, you know, maintaining the them while they're in, I guess, custody um, was done on the volunteer basis. So are we allo- allocating other funds? Because now it'll be paid employees doing it. Um, and uh, from the operational perspective, I'm sure you can find it within the budget, but uh, is that something that we should be concerned about?
Uh, it's a very good question. Uh, I I wouldn't be concerned about it. We we do expect that the costs are gonna be nominal over, you know, the the course of of twenty twenty one. Um, you know, obviously we got notice of this, you know, after our budget was developed, so it's a cost we'll just absorb during the week, it's not a problem. Um, you know, because we have staff on. Uh, the weekends, you know, there what, there may be some overtime costs. Um, but when we look at animal control and and the use of the pound, um, you know, with social media, you know, i- it's it's almost rare to see a dog in there for any length of time. For two reasons, you know, number one, it's it's easy to get the message out there that we have a an animal and people, you know, responsible owners pick them up right away. And the second is, it's very expensive to put your animal in the pound. Um, you know, if they run stray, so you know, there is a monetary penalty to do that. So we try and avoid that, we always try and match up, uh, you know, uh, dogs that are licensed as they should be with the owners as quickly as we can to avoid that pound time.
Great, thanks. Um, there there is gonna be, do you have another question, Counsel Debushi?
Uh, just on the follow-up there, um, is it possible, and I I've known, I know it happens in other locations, uh, where you can foster pets, um, and or um, volunteers, I'll say in a sense that to walk the dogs because I think they they really, you know, may need that uh, kind of um, care, I guess, if they are at the pound for any length of time. So is that a consideration that uh the bylaw officer may look into? Uh, because I know that there are instances of foster, um, dogs or cats if somebody's in the hospital and they need somebody to care with it and there are those issues and or if it's been in the pound for a while and and it hasn't been uh, claimed, I guess.
Yeah, so we we have to follow, as I indicated, the the Pounds Act, which includes things like exercising, you know, the animals. Um, you know, at the current time, that'll be completed by municipal staff. Um, because one of the currents concerns we obviously do have, given the COVID nineteen pandemic, is limiting people in our facilities. Um, you know, we we want to make sure that, uh, you know, that we undertake this uh, on a basis that's that's safe for um, you know, uh, our staff. Uh, you know, longer term, we're we're certainly gonna look at other options. Um, you know, going forward, um, this is, you know, hopefully more of a stopgap measure. Um, but we would need some time to to look at developing a plan. Um, and in my mind, you know, that fits with the development of next year's budget um, and gives us some time to do that. So, you know, currently, like I said, we'll we'll, you know, we'll follow the the acts required to do uh, by law um, and ensure that uh, we're doing that in a safe way municipally.
Good. Counsel Jingra?
So I'm just wondering what happens if a dog isn't picked up, it isn't claimed after, you know, a couple of weeks or whatever, whatever the time is, what uh, what happens?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question and honestly, I don't have an answer for, uh, because we we haven't had to experience that yet. Um, you know, it's something we would obviously, I I think we would deal with that more hopefully on a one-off basis um, as opposed to something we're seeing habitually. Um, you know, we we do have, um, you know, some good contacts within uh, the Ontario government and the veterinary services um, that have agreed to provide advice for us as we move forward. Um, so in a situation like that, you know, it would be, you know, we research what our requirements are, um, and then use that to help us develop those types of models going forward. You know, obviously, we would do things in the most humane way possible. Um, but that being said, you know, we people do have to recognize we don't have a Humane Society that's active anymore and and it is our responsibility that comes with costs associated with it.
Yeah, uh, just a couple of quick comments I see on other hands. Uh, absolutely, Counsel Jingra, like the the community before the Humane Society was established and volunteers there was a, it was self uh, self-monitored with the with uh, just dogs, no cats. We've had the debates with the public in the past on the cat bylaw and we chose to not administer any type of uh, of uh, in in I guess, uh, how do I use the word, uh, um, vigilantiness uh, to the cat world because it was too hard to to get cats to get them to come to you, a dog will come to you, but a cat, and so they just, they're out, you know, doing business in people's yards and gardens and whatever might be happens. So the the uh, part of the uh, the no-call that the Humane Society had implemented over the years, uh, it was there and as Mr. Skorczynski has identified, we are not gonna be a Humane Society, we're gonna be a administrative uh, facility that's gonna pick up dogs as needed from uh, from the community that's uh, or or a threat or or lost or whatever that might be and you'll do the the regular advertise and see if the owner's present. If they're just an abandoned animal, then you have to make decision and that decision might be as uh, Mr. Skorczynski said, it might be the most humane way is just to put the animal down. We'll have to have those discussions. There is a second part of that, I think, that we have to really investigate is not only the manager on call because do we expect our manager on calls to go out at eight o'clock at night? We might have to look at a budgetary item uh, in the line to look at an after-hours individual in the community under contract. We did do that in the past as well. So after four o'clock or four thirty, we had an individual in the community who took on the contract position for the year at a fee and they would pick up the animals and and feed them and and um, and exercise them after hours for a period of time. Uh, and then again, then Humane Society came along. So there's some other things we gotta consider for sure. But uh, we we would uh, we would definitely have to lay out some some ground rules. So I'm thinking we're gonna have to have some more discussion around the impact of the Humane Society closure. Anybody else? Okay, great, thanks. We'll move on to the next item. Thanks for that report. Uh, we have a verbal update on the community safety and wellbeing plan. Uh, we have uh, uh, Ms. Lee's, thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, in March of two thousand eighteen, the Ontario government passed Bill one seventy-five, which is the Safer Ontario Act. Uh, this act requires all municipal Ontario municipalities to prepare and adopt a community safety and wellbeing plan by January first, two thousand twenty-one. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, the Ontario government did extend the deadline to July first, two thousand twenty-one. Your administration has reached out to the townships of Manitowoc, Terrace Bay and Scriber to see if they were interested in preparing a joint community safety plan as all four communities have many commodities such as social services and police services and a joint plan could sev- serve to provide broader benefits. All four municipalities now have signed a voluntary memorandum of understanding to work cooperatively together proceed with developing a joint plan and the creation of a joint community service, community safety wellbeing committee. Marathon will serve as the project lead. The committee's first meeting is scheduled for next week and the first order of business of the committee will be to establish the terms of reference to guide the project process over the term of its work plan, which is estimated to be completed in the next five to six months. Given all the time challenges created by the COVID pandemic, administration recognizes that ju- that the July first deadline will not be met. But there are, but we are confident that we will have our plan in place by the fall time. Through the development, uh, the through the development process, regular updates will be provided to council and the public through various media. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Lee's on that, many safety plan presentation? Uh, so as you know, the government is implementing this, we've pushed back through the his own ones and through the uh, provincial body to uh, to ask for extensions, they did, they didn't grant it and uh, I think, I think at the end of the day, governments change policies and the bureaucratic process quite often, there's no need to do this, there's no need to implement a safety plan. Like, most communities are doing it. And if there was one legislative plan that was submitted from the province to the municipalities and adopted, for each one of us, would be a much simpler process, but here we are. So thank you for the work you're doing in regards to getting the four communities, for the three other communities on board and having one community safety plan that we can all utilize. And it's basically just putting together a list of our our, you know, services that are providing for individuals in our communities as well as how we uh, you know, want our community police, so that we should have a very simple document, we don't need to make it a thirty-five pager. But the reality is we need to present one uh, uh, soon. So thanks for that and uh, I look forward, sorry?
Sorry, your worship, just to clarify, it won't be one plan, it'll be four individual plans for each municipality.
Oh, we're not gonna, because I I know we each have different needs, but I think the services that are provided within our communities are gonna be similar, but it'd be, are you, are they gonna do it that way, where a similar type plan, but it just kind of hears Manitowoc with a little bit of differences on how Manitowoc wants to see their community, how Terrace Bay wants to see theirs, how Scriber and how Maryland wants to see ours?
I believe that's how, that's the 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 road we're going to try to go down. I mean, the the consultant may come back and say, listen, one plan for the the four will work. Um, we won't know until we actually get a consultant and and have those discussions.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Nobody else? Good? Okay, thanks. Up next, we have a report on the development of the Recreation Master Plans. Ms. Goodchild, please.
Good afternoon and counsel, your worship. So in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-two corporate strategic plan, council identified the development of our Recreation Master Plan, RMP, as a project priority that includes community engagement, required recreation facility enhancements, centralizing recreation activities, increased community events and programming, and developing partnerships. The Town of Marathon currently does not have an RMP or any document that guides the planning of recreation or community services. The creation of a comprehensive RMP is critical from a long-term planning perspective as Marathon's demographics evolve and new development drives the economy and local population. The Community Services Department will lead and facilitate the development of the plan with the CAO clerk acting as project advisor based on community input from a broad range of community members, youth, adults, seniors, families, those with disabilities, et cetera, service providers, stakeholders and user groups. The Recreation Master Plan will be developed over the course of ten months using a five-phase approach. Phase one, plan frame, plan framework development, develop the terms of reference and consultation framework. Phase two, community input collection, surveys and community consultation. Phase three, data compilation, research and draft a report. So we'll compile results, draft the plan for review and input. Phase four, present a draft plan to the public and phase five, present the final plan to the public and council. Updates will be provided to council and the community at large throughout each phase of the project. A dedicated section of the municipal website will be created to house project information. And the cost for the development of the Recreation Master Plan and associated documents is estimated at ten thousand dollars and will be included in the twenty twenty-two municipal budget. Administration is presenting this report for information purposes only.
Report. Anybody have any questions of Mrs. Goodchild? Mr. Lake, Counsel Lake?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, yeah, you know what? Uh, if you would have talked to me a couple of years ago and said, what's your preferred outcome, it would have been that we would have been successful for that infrastructure funding and we'd have shovels in the ground building our new arena, you know, community center. Obviously, that was what all of council wanted, like we, I think there's this real understanding that recreation is essential for the health of a community. So given that that didn't work, um, one, will this plan sort of help us get to that goal of ultimately having a new facility? And if not, is this probably the best way to, you know, manage the facilities that we have? I just, I don't want to give up on that dream of, uh, you know, a facility that makes more sense in terms of energy, makes more sense in terms of usage and the AODA. But also I know we need to be realistic that we don't have thirty-three million dollars to, you know, throw up our own. Doom a stone. So I'm just wondering. Yeah, like what role does the plan play in in getting us to where we want to go?
So in in terms of this plan, it it is definitely a guiding document for. What what we want to see in the future and what the public wants to see in the future. I'll let Mr. Mr. Skorchinsky, he's got his hands up, so I'll I'll let him take over.
Great, thanks, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Yeah, thanks, your worship, and it's an excellent question and and. Really, you know, we're going to approach this from two different perspectives. So, you know, one, the is, you know, the Active Living Centre, you know, that's that's a standalone project. You know, the, you know, that is continuing to move forward. You know, we're actually working on that this week. The the mayor and I have a meeting with a potential corporate sponsor. And the province has just announced recently a new building program that's going to be launched in July. So I'll be taking that report forward to council at our first June meeting. What we want to do with recreation, which we traditionally haven't done. Is we want to start to align it with our longer-term planning perspective. So we have a long-term asset management plan. We now have a long-term infrastructure technology plan. We always have a ten-year capital plan. What we don't have is a long-term recreation plan. So, you know, we're not going to be asking, you know, detailed, specific questions like. You know, what color should a building be of the public? What we want to know is what direction should we be taking recreation and marathon, you know, from a a public perspective, right? So, you know, continuing to focus on things we've traditionally done like golf. Should we get into more hiking opportunities? So really, we're going to be asking more broader-based questions to establish the strategy so we can align it. With our other strategies. So we have those in place from a strategic planning perspective.
Thanks. Counsel DeBouchy.
Yeah, I think one of the things that you've noted and it is a long-term plan because it is an ass. All our recreational facilities are have a, I guess. They're an asset to the community, both financially and, I guess, for the wellbeing. The issue that that I see or I I'm kind of. Wrestling with is we have so many opportunities that are spread out within our community or border our community. We have a trail that leads to, you know, we wanted to develop that led to, you know, BitbeGone. We have a, you know, waterfront now that we want to enhance. We have to focus, or I think one of these things that this this. Plan should do is focus on assets. How do we maintain it? How do we enhance it? And do we really need to expand to do more? Because we have a limited budget that we're going to have to deal with. And if we're looking at. The Active Living Centre as. An end goal in the next five to whatever years, we really have to to see what we do and, you know, do we have to? You know, do everything? Because we do a lot, you know, I mean, just look at Pebble Beach, we've just taken on that project that will. Encompass more of our labor and our time to manage the waterfront. If we enhance that, the docking system, I mean, not the. Economic portion of the waterfront, that's going to take our time. So is there things that we are currently doing? That we may need to get out of the business also. So I think when when we look at it, it can't be, yes, what we take on more. It's also. What can we pare down and not do? And it's, I know it's a tough decision, but, you know, it's something that this plan also has to look. For at doing or at 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 least considering. Because like all assets, it's not the capital that that really is the cost. It's the onward forever maintenance that we have to do and operational cost. That really have a detrimental effect on on our budget because. Capital costs we can get funding for. The operational is always just going to come out of that, you know, our operation and whatever we can run through taxation. So if we can concentrate on those, also the negative side of what we do or what we may not be able to do any longer. That's something I think we should also consider.
Thank you for that. I think I just want to finalize and note in other hands up in regards to what the Mr. Skorchinsky's just commented on and maybe some part where you're saying, Counsel DeBouchy. I do believe we have the most wonderful backyard in the world at our doorstep. So we need to look at some of our recreational. Planning going forward to to really utilize that. And we have. Like a lot of people like hiking in their community, a lot of people like mountain biking. We have great trails that were developed in the past by volunteers. Let's look at that. Let's work with the Cross Country Ski Club. We have a world-class facility. We don't, we don't promote enough. We have volunteers run that facility. So part of our Recreation Master Plan has to really be diverse and look at what we really have as assets, not just bricks and mortars building, which we always traditionally have looked at as recreation. We have an arena, we have a golf course. We have some really good assets in our community and we can develop them at a very little ongoing operating cost. In the future, it's just about getting them up and running and really promoting them. And not only that, then you know what happens when you promote. The community and have people come to the community, have a great economic base, then you have growth because you have growth in the business sector, providing services for people who come to your community. So those are all part of the Recreation Master Plan that we have to visit and look at for sure. So thanks for that report, Ms. Goodchild. Then we look forward to having more discussion. Around this and how do we as council and the public get input and put input into the plan as well.
Yeah, so after council meeting starting in June and July, we'll go into our plan framework development, which is when we'll start advertising and getting it out. To the public in ways knowing that this is happening, where do they go for information? And all that. And we'll have a dedicated page on our municipal website. That's one click away.
Awesome. Thank you. So so good reminder to the public and I would encourage all council to share that with. Any type of social media aspect you're with and people you talk to to get that so we can have a diverse set of. Comments and inquiries coming back to the community for our future and our children's future. And I think, you know, this year we don't have student counselors on our on our council, obviously due to the COVID nineteen, but. Through Counsel Lake, I think there's some opportunities to have that student council body consider coming into the fall. Maybe we'll get them back on our our council table, but even right now. Having some some consideration for them to have discussions around some input that they might have for the community. Thanks. Thanks for that, Ms. Goodchild. Okay. Up next, we have the report on small business subclasses. Mr. Verbal.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In the budget announcement on November fifth of last year. The province provided municipalities with the flexibility to target. Property tax relief to eligible small businesses through the adoption of a new optional subclass in the commercial and or industrial classes. The Ministry of Finance finally published regulations on this option on May seventh. Each municipality must determine the eligibility parameters for its local environment. A quote from the province states. Municipalities have a variety of priorities that may influence the definition of small business. And as such, are in the best position to define eligibility criteria that reflects their local priorities and needs. The regulations state that the subclass could have a reduction up to thirty-five percent of the municipal rate for the property class. This reduction in property tax would be funded either through a redistribution of tax to the broad class. So through all the commercial properties or distributed through all classes from residential to large industrial. The province has offered a suggestion of funding that this new subclass can be funded by absorbing the cost through. Municipalities lowering their levy. With the delayed release of the regulations, there does not appear to be any municipality that has implemented the optional subclass for two thousand twenty-one. The consensus appears that this option should not be viewed as a short-term COVID nineteen mitigation tool, but rather as a long-term solution. That fits with the municipality's objectives that avoid unintended consequences. Based on the foregoing, administration is recommending that the town of Marathon not institute the optional small business subclass in two thousand twenty-one. But review it as part of the two thousand twenty-two municipal budget process. So this report is being provided for council's information only.
Great. Thanks for that, Mr. Verbal. Any questions or comments on that? I see no hands. I think it's a simple solution that you're right. The government of Ontario shouldn't start creating more. More subclasses within classes and confusions about taxation in our communities. We have a, you know, a system that works well. And, you know, with the COVID nineteen obviously impact that we've all been faced with, we've helped our business community as best we can. We consider that going through our budget process each and every year. I've done about twenty-seven or so budgets and I can tell you, I've always been advocate for looking out for the most fair and equitable way to tax our residents, both residential. Small business, multi-residential, as well as industrial and light industrial. So everybody has to live in a community, but we all want the services provided to our residents. And we all equally have to pay for those services, I think, fair and equitable for everybody in the community. So I agree with you, Mr. Verbal, that we do not. Implement any subclass within our class categories. Counsel DeBouchy.
Of course, I have some comment. Should. Is this the, would be considered the commercial classification then? Because we don't really have big biz or business class. So are we talking within the commercial side sector of our? Sectors that they now divided into a big business and a small business or is it from all industrial and commercial? Because if we're trying to protect, the intent of this is to protect small, local mom and pop businesses. I can understand that issue because big boxes. You know, may not need the protection as much as say the the mom and pop issues. So is that the intent? Of the classification of the subclass, at least in your opinion. We'll have a whole year, I'll say six months before we develop our next budget. But is that what you foresee is the? Intent of this?
The regulation states it can be instituted for the commercial. The industrial, either or, or total. So this was brought up by the city of Toronto who believed many years that this would be a great way to help the mom and pop stores. So the province says, fine, you want it, we're giving it to you, you have to run it.
So so so, Mr. Verbal, under the provincial mandate, the city of Toronto has their own act. So I think the city of Toronto should implement whatever they like. And the provincial government looks at monitoring and administering the provincial financial data back to the rest of us who follow the provincial municipal act.
The regulations. Are deal with both the City of Toronto Act and the Municipal Act.
Yeah, I I know, but what I'm saying is the government should only just let Toronto deal with their problem, not ours.
The province is saying, here's a tool for you guys. Use it. Whoever wants it can use it.
Certainly. Counsel Lake?
Yeah, I know we we often get fed up with the provincial government, but I think what I'm hearing from Mr. Verbal and I think is is good advice is. You know, any tool that's offered to us, depending, who cares who gives it to us, we should probably investigate, see if it works for our municipality. I I like the advice not to jump and do it now when we haven't done any thinking about it and indeed it could have unforeseen consequences, but I like the idea of. Taking it again, just as a tool that might be useful. Maybe it will be, I don't know. But certainly, I I trust administration to, you know. Look at it, think about it for a little while and then come back next budget year to say, yes, this is a good or a bad idea for the municipality.
I'm sure I'll have more more to share with it, but remember, property tax is a tax on the value of your property. It is not based on income tax. That's what. The province will tax and that's what the federal government will tax. So. There is a Pandora's box of potential problems. So. We can have a small bank come in town and open something that's ten foot square. How do you, will that become a small business? Again, everybody is very emotional right now because most businesses are having a hard time with COVID. But if we bring this in and COVID is hopefully done with. The two thousand twenty-two, you may have small businesses going gangbusters and then if they're given a small tax or they're given. The small tax discount. Is that fair to some of those larger? Enterprises in town that employ a lot more citizens?
Okay, so there there's there's basically no action required today anyway, so we'll discussing this in the in the fall. Going into two thousand twenty-two implementation of the budget. So it's more for comment and information today. But some some thought, food for thought for us to think about for sure. So Counsel DeBouchy, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to to reiterate, I guess, what the Counsel Lake had stated. Because twenty-two is, I guess, the last budget of our mandate is just that we have the knowledge. Or the background or the. Administration's interpretation of this tool, as it's referred to, so that it's something that we can consider. We may not implement, but at least it's something we can consider moving forward. So it's just to give the initiation that some heads up to look at possibly. How that will pan out in twenty-two, more than likely twenty-three, but if if not, at least that we have the base information moving forward.
Yeah, I'm sure that administration will bring a full, full detailed report going forward in the fall. Counsel Valance?
Yeah, I just wanted to put in my two comments. I would, as Counselor Lake mentioned, I think it's very imperative that we investigate the resource and how it could benefit our community, but also. As you mentioned, your worship, I wouldn't want to be the first community in Ontario to take this on and kind of set the pace. So I would like to see other communities kind of set the tone. And learn from what they're doing and go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Skorchinsky.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So Counsel Valance nailed it. I know, I like things that are simple. Let's let somebody else do it first and see how they do and we'll learn from that and go from there.
Great, thank you. So we look forward to that report in the fall. Thanks for that update, Mr. Verbal. Up next, we have a report on two thousand twenty-one final levy of taxes for Marathon. Call me, don't remember, Mr. Verbal.
So just as a matter of transparency, I brought that optional subclass. Now that council has said, let's not look at it for two thousand twenty-one. I'm bringing the final tax levy for two thousand twenty-one. On April nineteenth, the budget was approved with bylaw two thousand two. On May tenth, the tax ratios for two thousand twenty was twenty-one was passed with bylaw two thousand three. A bylaw is required specifying the tax rates by property class. The rates are attached as Schedule A. There's one caveat on the educational rate. The province did reduce the rates for the commercial and industrial classes. From point zero zero nine eight percent to point zero zero eight eight percent. But it maintained the two thousand twenty-one education rates for properties whose payment and lieu are retained by the municipality as. A as an assistant to municipalities. An example of education tax that the municipality can keep instead of transferring it to the school board is the taxes paid by the Canada Post. So the financial implications are outlined in the twenty twenty-one final levy of taxes and the prior budget reports. So the options are to approve. The tax rates as presented or approve them with amendments. Administration's recommending that option A be approved in that bylaw two thousand seven. Adopting the two thousand twenty-one final levy of taxes be approved as presented.
Great. Thank you for that report. I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation in two thousand twenty-one final levy of taxes. And for that, the appropriate bylaw be presented later in this meeting, adopting the final two thousand twenty-one final levy of taxes. Move by? Counsel Valance moving, Counsel Lake second. Any questions on that report? Hearing none? I'll call a question. All in favor?
Yes.
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 Great. Thank you very much. Carried. Thanks, Mr. Verbal. Okay, up next, we have a motion here for check runs. And the motion is that the April twenty twenty-one check run. Runs be approved for payment in the amount of accounts payable one million, two hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred ninety dollars and twenty cents. And payable in the amount of two hundred and four dollars, twenty, two hundred eighty, two hundred four thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Move by?
Counsel Valance?
Counsel Shingra.
Thank you. Any questions of those check runs? Hearing none? Call a question on favor?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you. Okay, up next, we have some reports the appointed members' boards outlining. So I'll go up first with the update for the Thunder Bay District Municipal League. We had our meeting last weekend. Discussing some some key important issues within the district and number one on the agenda was. The Emergency Measures Act within the city of Thunder Bay, the EMS services provided throughout the the region as well as the city. So the stems. So the STEM's, uh, report and Mr. Gates was on, gave an overview of thirty-five minutes, forty minutes, along with Mayor Morrow from the city of Thunder Bay. Give a really good update on where they are and working with the master plan. Fully understanding the, uh, the impact it might have. They pulled back and are going to work with the master plan based on more consultation with the communities. Specifically, the communities that are impacted greatly by the closure, potential closure of, uh, of, uh, um, stations. But as well as other communities that are not going to be specifically affected by closures, but also the impact it has on staffing levels. And, um, you know, the impact in the workloads, the PTSD, uh, shifting of employees, the amount of employees, increase of employees, uh, paramedics within our, our communities, within our region. So I think the majority of the board felt very comfortable, especially the communities that were impacted, uh, with the closure potentials, uh, that they're going to go back in the city and through Mr. Mayor Morrow assured us that they will look at a regional approach and have, um, have discussions throughout their master plan on how that will affect all communities, including our First Nations neighbors, uh, throughout the district that they provide services for. So it was a great update, great, uh, information. And, uh, of course, everybody, everybody was happy, but frustrated at the same time that we had to go through this, this, uh, process to get them to put the brakes on, to have, uh, revisit the master plan and how it was going to impact all of us without having really much consultation with that. So, that's done. Moving forward, we look at, uh, that, uh, discussion. We will hopefully have some discussions with the, uh, the management of that or the consultant to see what our problems are in Marathon. Specific in how we provide services for Marathon and our surrounding communities of, uh, Bitigon and, uh, and, uh, the highway corridor. Okay, uh, we also had Mayor Morrow give us an update of what the city was up to in regards to COVID. Everybody kind of held off on their, their situations with COVID and, uh, just talked about a bit about the, the, uh, you know, government of Ontario having the impact and the closures and how everybody wants to get back, uh, uh, with open, some sort of open. Now they've eliminated the color system. It's a staging system again, so a little more confusion. Everybody's in the same situation. They want to get their communities back up and running and we have low numbers within the Thunder Bay district. Uh, so that was discussed. And of course, uh, we just did the league business as we always do as our board meetings. And then, uh, we had an update and presentation by Counselor Rebecca Johnson out of the city of Thunder Bay and talking about, uh, women in politics. So she gave us a quick overview of that. She's trying to encourage more women to get involved in the city as well as the region. So I asked her to reach out to Mrs. Miss Lees and to do maybe a, a delegation sometime over the next, uh, couple of months, um, to our council on, uh, getting, uh, women involved in politics, uh, in our community. So hopefully she's reached out. I don't know if she has Miss Lees yet.
No, she has not.
Okay, I will remind her again to reach out to you to see if she can set up a little, uh, delegation just to give an overview of, uh, her program and what it looks like and how we can have, uh, more, uh, women in our communities getting involved in politics. Other than that, that was it. Sorry, that was it. Okay, Counselor Lake.
Thanks for worship. Actually, I spent time with Counselor Johnson on D-SAB, so there you go, it's a good segue. Um, y- you know, it was, uh, the meeting was short this time. There was one, uh, issue for D-SAB that's coming up that felt like I, I'd like to discuss with council. And it came out of, uh, Nipigon actually. So Nipigon is like Marathon, starting to, uh, have a bit of a housing crunch. Now, there's less and less, uh, kind of market units available. So their proposal and what they kind of asked, uh, folks to talk about was, um, in, in Nipigon, uh, there are some chronically empty D-SAB buildings. So the proposal was could, would municipalities want to support, uh, market rent places in chronically, uh, uh, vacant D-SAB units? And so I was, I, I don't know enough about Marathon's particular numbers. Uh, I think the mayor would probably be able to speak this better than I, I can. Uh, but is that a model that we might want to support, uh, or not? So it would be, for instance, uh, the example they were giving Nipigon is, you know, seniors who would like to get out of their house, uh, but their income threshold is too high to meet, uh, the, the D-SAB, uh, structures. So if there are chronically kind of vacant D-SAB buildings, could we offer market rent in those to help, uh, you know, get people into the housing they should be in? So I was just looking for a little feedback from administration or from the mayor, uh, your thinking on that.
So, you know, honestly, before anybody else, I don't see any hands, but anyway, if they have their hand, please put it up. I fully would support that program, Counselor Lake. I've, I've asked for that in the past because we've had vacancies, uh, not Marathon. Marathon's always been really, uh, a high demand area. And we have that threshold of RGI's rent geared to income and, and, and market rent. So that's directed from D-SAB, but I can tell you in our neighboring communities, we've had a lot of vacancies and they sat empty and they deteriorated and there's loss of income because they don't switch and, and change the numbers. So you can bring that back to your board and I'm not going to identify any, anywhere. Just that when there is times of vacancies within the, the housing portfolios because they're, they're not meeting the thresholds of RGI or market, they have to revisit those, but on a timely manner. Uh, no different than rent increases or rent decreases when markets change. They, they, that can't be years. That's got to be like weeks or months at the very onset of that. So yeah, I would have definitely encouraged you to bring that back to their, to your board. And say, if we have vacancies and obviously Nipigon have vacancies in a D-SAB, uh, housing portfolio, uh, great, Marathon nonprofit housing is, is, is full. We have a, a waitlist and, uh, so we, we never experienced that. So the twenty-six years I've been employed there, never ever, ever experienced that. But there are other communities that do experience that. So we have to have the D-SAB act quickly on that, uh, for sure. Counselor Valance and then Mr. Skorchinsky.
I was just going to say from my other hat, as an employment advisor, I would definitely want to know more about this for sure. Because from the employment side of things, we do definitely have, uh, struggles or challenges in attracting talent to the community because of housing. So definitely I would say there's a need, but I would need obviously more information on details in order to fully support it.
Great, thanks, Mr. Skorchinsky.
Uh, yeah, your worship. Thanks, uh, for Counselor Lake. Just some, some real world feedback. And, uh, you know, obviously administratively, we're a supporter of market rent. Uh, it's how we built senior supportive housing in Marathon. Uh, and the simple comparator is, is if you're not using market rent, there's a broader subsidy somewhere coming in to subsidize the lower revenues coming in. So market rent is, I think, uh, when you can mix that and pair that with rent geared to income, you have a better housing diversity mix in your community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Jingra.
Um, so I just wanted to share, I am, I'm on the board for the Marathon Municipal Nonprofit Housing. Um, I joined, I don't know, maybe six months ago. They asked, they had a opening and asked me to, to join. Um, so I mean, I, the mayor already touched, touched on, on the needs there and the, the waitlist there. But I agree from that perspective, I think, uh, looking at those options that, that you mentioned would be, would be a good idea. Um, and if there's anything I can do from, from that board and supporting that, I can certainly bring it up to the board as well.
Okay, thank you. That's pretty clear marching orders then as we go back into those discussions. So thank you.
Counselor Valance, you want to add anything else? Okay, your hand was still up. Thanks. Uh, okay, thanks for that, uh, Counsel Lake, and, uh, hopefully, uh, you can bring those messages back from, uh, from council as well as administration on the market rent, uh, concept that we fully support here in Marathon. Thanks. Okay, up next, we have a bylaw. Bylaw number, number two oh seven being a bylaw to adopt the final levy of taxes for the ti- the, the year of twenty twenty-one. In it for the collects, collection and said taxes to be read a first, second, and third time and finally passes twenty-fifth day of May, two thousand twenty-one. Move by.
Counselor Valance.
Thank you. Any questions of that bylaw? Hearing none, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Kerry. I, now, up next have a, uh, uh, resolution for the, uh, council hereby supports the resolution received from the municipality of Limington pertaining to the advocacy in regards to the, uh, Information Act. The M F, M F F I P A. And further that I copy this motion before it onto the individual listeners onto region, originating resolution. And the act is basically in regards to the, uh, Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act. So I need to move a second, put that on the floor and we'll have discussion.
Counselor Valance.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Here we go. Counselor Lake.
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, so I'm, I'm, especially for administration, it always seemed to me that the freedom of information is one of those great ideas that allows, you know, checks and balances in government, but is administratively a nightmare? That, uh, um, you know, municipalities can get overwhelmed in terms of, uh, uh, requests that are, you know, sometimes spurious, whatever. Uh, I'm just wondering what our experience with that has been.
So, so prior to going into the actual, uh, debate first before administration might, I want to ask that, and it might be through the, uh, the clerk or the deputy clerk. That the resolution be that it be resolved that the government of the Consumer Services Relations be requested to review the act and consider recommendation as follows, that the act is signed, the municipal clerk or designate to be the head under the act and that it be updated to address current and emerging technologies, regulate the need for const- consistent routine disclosure practices across all institutions and that the thresholds for frivolous and or vex- vexatious actions be reviewed and to take in consideration the community and the available resources in which it is applied. This is a really key, that's not, that's really key because we are, just as Mr. Verbo indicated, we are not the city of Toronto with four hundred, five hundred staff that can be passed down the, the channel. We are small communities, we have limited staff capacities. That the thresholds for frivolous and a vivac- vivacious also considered the nominee of right, red, uh, requesters and their abusive nature and language and request to ensure protection from harassment as provided in the Occupational Health and Safety Act and that the application is scalability of the fees be designed to ensure that taxpayers are protected from persons abusing the, and the accessing of information process. Cause we can, you can get really a nightmare going on. So I believe that those powers should be backed and really to our own individual communities because it gives us the opportunity to, to really put a handle on that. Counselor Dubushi.
Yeah, again, I, I think I'm going to reiterate what Counselor Lake said. It was, it is a good idea in theory. The problem was, is the harassment that you can get from requests. And now it's kind of multiplied because of social media where it now becomes a public forum as opposed to a, a freedom of information request. So I can support this, uh, that they review it, but I think in the same sense, if they are reviewing it, they also have to have, uh, a committee or a commission set up so that we're not stifling the request, but we are curtailing the abuse of the freedom of information requests. And so it's a slippery slope, but I, I can support this one moving forward. But I still think they're going to have to look at getting some input from not just municipalities, but for say advocacy groups who are there to protect people's rights.
Yep, for sure. Well, I don't think there's any question about protecting people's rights, but there's also the, the, uh, frivolous, uh, requests that constantly come in and, uh, and we don't have no control. So by that being said, it could be really, uh, onerous on our staff. So Mr. Skorchinsky.
Yeah, thanks for worship. Just, uh, I just want to add a couple of things administratively that were brought up by counselors. So, one, it's, it's an act. So if the province amended, it would have to go through the environmental bill of rights anyway. So, uh, there, there'd be an opportunity to comment on it. Um, you know, I think, you know, secondly, we don't see a lot of these requests. I would say we have a, a handful of individuals in town that, uh, request a lot of information. Um, but honestly, our, our approach is, um, if it's not privileged and it's not confidential, we really don't have any issue sharing it. We're, we're an open, transparent government, um, and we want to share this information. But that being said, there are some nightmare stories in the province where, you know, you're only allowed to charge five dollars for these requests and it can take months to put the information together, right? So you get somebody who has a vendetta against the municipality or somebody on council and it can tie up resources and take, you know, uh, you know, just tremendous amounts of time. So, um, and as Counselor Dubushi indicated, uh, the, the act is dated. It doesn't take into account technologies that are available today. So, you know, it, a review of it, you know, going forward with us moving to more virtual, you know, certainly I think would be timely.
Great, thank you for that. So with that being said, I'm going to call the question. All in favor of this motion?
Yes.
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 Great, Kerry, thank you very much. Uh, a couple of updates. Verbally, Mr. Skorchinsky gave an update on the, uh, golf course, uh, COVID nineteen.
Thanks for worship. So, yeah, we're, we're set to open, uh, at the course tomorrow. Uh, obviously, uh, some information for golfers and the public to be aware. Um, at this time, it is only members only. Um, you know, I knew, I do know we get the feedback, how come it's not open to the public? Um, and really we're following the same plan we, we followed last year. Uh, and that's really on the advice of Golf Ontario. So, you know, it feels like we're out of the pandemic, but you know, of course we're not. So, you know, we still need to manage the golf course, um, you know, wi- with COVID protocols in mind. Um, so it's the exact same plan we instituted last year and out of that plan, we obviously had zero issues at the golf course. Um, so, you know, tee times are, are, you know, have to be booked. It's members only. And to start, there'll be twenty-minute intervals between tee times, um, to ensure that, uh, you know, there's proper distancing among golfers. Uh, we don't have any clubhouse services, of course. So what golfers are going to see is a, a very rudimentary setup, which, you know, is pretty much an enclosed trailer. Um, you know, where you would register for your round, um, a limited ability to buy, you know, beverages and, and food items. Um, we won't be renting any carts until we get the clubhouse back. We just don't have that ability with the current facilities. There's a couple of basic washrooms there. Um, and, you know, the biggest thing that we'll be providing to the golfers onsite as we start tomorrow is just, uh, a lot of safety, um, requirements because we have an active construction site under the Ministry of Labor. So, um, it'll be very well delineated where carts and golfers can go, um, through fencing, signage and, and barricades. Uh, we've also developed, uh, a map of traffic flow that all golfers will get before they head out on their round, um, which will make it very clear and very safe on, on where they have to go. Um, the one change I think this year that was not in place last year that's coming from the province is you are able to sit in a cart with somebody not from your household, but you both must wear masks. It does, it doesn't matter if you're vaccinated or not. If you're in a cart with somebody that's not from your household, you have to wear a mask. And we will be policing that. Um, that's just, uh, one of the protocols that, uh, we have to look at. And the, the final thing I would offer is, you, you know, just to be patient. Um, you know, we're doing the best we possibly can with a limited situation. Not only are we managing a pandemic, but we're, we're managing a new clubhouse build on top of it. Um, you know, as well as within the last week, a, a deluge of rain on the course that traditionally we don't get. Um, so there's a lot of areas that, uh, are under construction right now based on this latest dump this morning. So we just ask that golfers be patient, be courteous, um, and if they have questions, to ask staff that are onsite.
Great, thanks for that update. Counselor Lake.
Uh, thanks for that. Uh, that's a, a really good update. Um, I guess two-part question. One is like I, you know, like everybody else, I'm super excited to, uh, just get outside and, and do something, uh, recreationally. So if, if we book a tee time and get out there, can they do, um, membership purchases at the golf course site or does that have to happen somewhere else? And then two, looking into the full summer, like last year, as, as things get ramped up, are we looking to have not just members only, but also, uh, kind of a more open to the public, uh, uh, idea?
Yeah, so question number one, um, you purchase, you can purchase your, your membership one of two ways, uh, by calling Town Hall. Um, we can take it over the phone. You can purchase it over the, via the town website. Um, and what'll happen is when you purchase that, um, they will bring it. So if you bought it today, they would bring it up to the golf course and have it ready for you when you teed off the next day. So you buy them through Town Hall or the municipal website and they're available at the golf course, um, when you arrive for your tee time. And the second is, uh, we're absolutely hopeful that, uh, we can open that new clubhouse. I can tell you from doing, uh, the construction inspections, it's a beautiful facility. Um, you know, hopefully as the province moves with more gradual reopenings, um, we will of course go to more public green fees and hopefully be able to utilize that inside space for, for dining and not just takeout.
Great, Counselor Valance, do you still have a question?
No, uh, Counselor Lake stole it on me, so that's okay.
That's good, very good, thank you. Uh, just quickly, I want to give it, uh, an update from our morning, the meeting this morning. Uh, we asked, uh, the family health team to give us an update in regards to the situation here in Marathon. Oh, Counselor Dubushi, you had a question? Sorry.
Yes, i- if you could, uh, since we're talking about the recreation that's opening up, can you give an update also about, is there a process to, uh, book the tennis courts or is it a free-for-all? Is there, uh, restrictions on say me shagging baseballs at the Dyer's Field, uh, the skate park or the basketball net, or basketball, uh, outdoor basketball nets? Is there any process they have to go through or safety issues that are part of that, those openings?
No, we're, we're not actively, uh, booking or policing those outdoor facilities. Uh, we're just asking the public to be respectful of each other. Obviously, if you see people using the tennis courts, you know, wait your turn to get on there. Uh, and the same with the other facilities. Um, just, we, we don't have the capacity right now to, to take on booking those facilities and being actively out there. So again, it's just, uh, you know, being, uh, you know, good citizens in Marathon and, and using them appropriately.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So so yeah, this morning we had our ECG meeting and of course, talked about the updates and where we are with vaccinations in our community. Today Marathon is is sitting really not too bad in regards to to the community of Marathon only. The numbers are presented to people through the family health team about the the catchment area. So we broke it down for Marathon only. So basically, as we move forward with the vaccinations now to twelve year olds, so Marathon's population was be approximately three thousand, one hundred and fifty residents can be vaccinated. To date, well, sorry, as of May, May twentieth, which was the last vaccination clinic, there were eighteen hundred and ninety nine individuals had received their first dose. So sixty percent of our eligible residents, including now the twelve year olds incorporated with that. And then, of course, there's three hundred and twenty nine individuals received the second dose, about ten percent of that. So we're on the right track, and we're doing really well. We'll have another clinic on June the third. It's been advertised and looks like it's about another five hundred doses. So I think with the incorporation of the twelve year olds, they're looking at having more individuals take their younger peoples off into that. But what I'm saying today, and I'm going to do a message again tonight to try to get it out there, is we want all of our residents to get vaccinated. So there's a lot of people with hesitancy. I would encourage them to talk to their medical practitioners, talk to somebody they trust or have a discussion around it, and really consider getting vaccinated because we need to have that herd immunity situation in not only Marathon, but the province of Ontario and the country of Canada to be able to get back to the openness, as we just talked about, in open life and have our facilities opened up as well as our retail and our, you know, business sector. So encourage everybody you know, talk to everybody out there as much as you can. If they don't believe in the media or trust anybody, just to have them talk to their family practitioner, family health team, you know, their clergy, wherever they feel comfortable with having a discussion around to do that and have that discussion because we need to have our community vaccinated. And we're we're on a good track, we got the vaccinations coming, the vaccines coming. We just need people to get their arms poked now so we can go forward. So I I will do a little message around that and I'll share it on the town's Facebook going forward. But I would encourage residents in our community to do that. Thank you. Counselor Debushi.
Yes, and I'd just like to reiterate, just because you had your first dose, doesn't mean you can let your guard down. Please be considerate and wear a mask in public or when you can't distance yourselves, because it's not it's not the be all end all. You can still contact, you can still pass it on. You know, it's it's something that that isn't gone just because you had your vaccination. So just be, please be aware and be courteous, and just because you've had your vaccination, people don't know that. So please be courteous and let other people have the ease of mind, you know, that they're protected as well, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Valens?
Yeah, I just want to, I won't take too much time, I just want to reiterate, I got my vaccination last week, and I just want to give a shout out to the Marathon Family Health Team and Naush for all their hard work. It was extremely, extremely well ran and efficient. And so thank you again for all your hard work for throughout the last year, year and a half now. So I just, yeah, thank you to the whole healthcare system in our community.
So just a final word with both Counselors Shingra and Counselor Valens being our younger counselors. And that's the age group now that we have, we're getting into, we need those those individuals in our community to really get on board. Please, I would encourage both of you to, through your social media contacts and opportunities, spread that word and and get the the message out there that we need our community to be to be vaccinated and the the vaccines are coming. So get get in line, call the the family health team and set yourself up an appointment for at least June third or beyond. Thanks. Okay, with that being said, I have a motion here to adjourn at the hour of five thirty four PM. Move by.
Counselor Valens.
Counselor Shingra.
Counselor Lake, thank you very much all and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Have a great week.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.